Right, let's go ahead and get started. I now call to order the town of Elon Town Council meeting for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance. So everyone who is able will please stand and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the law. We are working with a new agenda, so we'll ask that everybody give us some patience. Um, so the first thing that we'll do is just for the notes that all members are present. Um, I am seated here as I'm still in my recovery period from COVID. Um, so that's why I'm here. I am out of my isolation worries. Um, moving on to our consent agenda. So Diana, if you'll please read those items.
Yes, those items are. Excuse me, proposed twenty twenty-three Town Council meeting schedule. Letter B, Mayor Appointment to Committees, and Letter C, the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty work session meeting minutes.
Any question? The meeting schedule is the one that we had discussed with some of the changes to the normal cadence, and we also included um, the February retreat on that.
Think we added the November, November retreat date as well.
Oh, we did? Yes, they're tentative. So, of course, we can discuss that as it gets closer, but we can just go ahead and put that in. And then reading minutes are those that are here in front of you. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Moving on to public comments, this is the public opportunity to share their concerns or wishes for the town of Elon. If you would like to speak, um, you should have signed in at the beginning of the meeting, but you're welcome to stand, speak your name and your address. And you will be granted three minutes. Do we have anybody wishing to make a public comment? Anyone online?
No.
We will place the public comment section. Moving on to a public hearing. So we have rezoning case RZ dash twenty twenty-two dash zero four, and I believe Lori's gonna give us an update on that.
Yeah, it's ready to go. You want me to bring it up now?
Yes.
Okay. Two seconds. I dropped this screen.
Mayor, members of the board, good evening. I would like to state that all LDO and state statutes have been met for this public hearing this evening. Um, and at this time, I'd like to submit my staff report into the record. Um, the case that you have before you tonight is a requested rezoning case RZ twenty twenty-two dash oh four from suburban residential, excuse me, from industrial to suburban residential. So the, the first slide on the screen for you is zooming right in on the area, and I'm not sure which one I want to point out here. Look at that lovely new laser. Um, it's gonna get me every time. Um, so that property is at the intersection of Cook Road and University Road, with the railroad just immediately behind it. Um, it's slower here. Um, to the west of the property, um, we have a vacant wooded parcel on that's located in Gibsonville. To the south, we have several single-family homes down here, um, kind of in the, um, it's in the Abendale subdivision, I believe, in Gibsonville. To the east, you have, um, what was previously, um, the Sonoco, I'm probably not saying it right. It's now, I believe, SPC Mechanical Corporation. Um, and to the north, you have two vacant parcels, um, also bordered by the railroad. So looking at the zoning map, um, to the east and to the north, you can see the purple in Elon, you've got the industrial zoning. And then if we go to the next slide, we actually, about Gibsonville on the west, so I went in and copied their zoning map for you, and this brown um, area, which is kind of hard to see in relation to the parcel over here. Um, so that brown is RM eight, which is a multifamily residential zoning, and then the orange just below it is RS fifteen, which is a residential, single-family zoning. Um, so parcel one zero eight nine three two, it was originally part of a larger eighteen-and-a-half acre parcel. Um, and you can see the new parcel cut out over here, this little sliver, and it was all originally part of this larger delayed parcel. Um, with the industrial building to the east, prior to University Drive being constructed, it was all one contiguous parcel of land. Once University Drive was platted and then constructed, it created that small portion off to the west, approximately one point one six acres. Um, the property was then subdivided in twenty twenty by that survey plat on the screen in front of you with all in your packet. Um, and that one point one six acre was officially created at that time. Um, point five acres, and it's kind of hard to see of that parcel, this little mini area up here is actually in the railroad right of way. So you've got about point six-six of an acre that's actually used. So the property is located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Elon, and should the property owner decide um, that he wishes to use the town utilities and services, he would need to submit a petition for annexation. Um, the site currently has access to the town of Gibsonville Water. Um, however, there is no access to sewer at this time, and the property owner has indicated that he will be installing a septic system until sewer service is available to the site. I think we're looking at approximately three to five years before sewers out there, um, coming from Gibsonville. The parcel is currently zoned industrial. Um, the industrial district in our LDO is described as being able to accommodate existing and future manufacturing, wholesaling, and warehousing use. Um, the proposed zoning we have tonight is suburban residential, um, which accommodates the town's single-family subdivisions and also provides for infill development. The primary use in the SR zoning district is the single-family detached home. Um, other allowable uses include churches, cemeteries, schools, stake uses, swim clubs, outdoor rec facilities. Um, but due to the size of the parcel, um, there's quite a few site constraints, which I'll kind of go into, and these were in your packet, um, and I know most of you have probably driven by this parcel um, quite a bit, but to actually see it, um, from compliments of Google View. Um, so here we're on Cook Road, looking at the parcel, we've got University off to the right here. Um, so you can see that grade change along with the tree line. Um, that's just zooming in further, and again, you can see where you're at on, in relation to Cook Road, and then up high is University. Um, so this is actually looking at the north side of the property, we were heading south on Cook Road. Um, so there's the, that railroad right there. Um, and then you've got Cook Road, and then again, University, and then you see the bridge in the background, University as well. Um, this is if you're on University Drive, um, heading south, you can see the tops of some of the trees over here, these trees are a little bit taller, getting your railroads back here. Um, and lastly, this is if you're, um, heading north on University, um, and again, you can see that tree line there. So envision Elon, um, twenty forty, our comprehensive plan identifies the site as employment. Um, employment is defined as areas that are intended to accommodate light industrial uses, offices, um, and provide for existing Elon University services. So while the comprehensive plan indicates that the parcel should be utilized for employment uses, staff feels that there are some unique features to the parcel. Um, the parcel, again, was originally part of a much larger parcel, um, I think where the employment designation would have been more logical. Um, it's also one point one six acres in size and has a net area of point six-six, once you remove the railroad right of way. Um, given the topography of the lot that I just showed you on the previous slides, um, it would be challenging to utilize the site for industrial uses as provided under the current zoning. So zoning considerations, um, in North Carolina must address the potential for the decision to be classified as spot zoning, and spot zoning is not illegal in the state of North Carolina. As long as you meet four criteria. So I went through those four criteria, um, in your packet, I will not go through all of them this evening unless you'd like me to. Um, staff feels that the, this parcel meets those four criteria, um, listed on the screen, um, as to not be counted as spot zoning, and also to point out that you're essentially downzoning the parcel, um, a term we use because you're taking it from a more intense industrial, which has more impact on the neighbors, to a lesser intense residential, um, and it's also more compatible with the surrounding area. So North Carolina General Statute states that governing boards must adopt a statement um, on the consistency and reasonableness of our requested rezoning. Um, as far as when reviewing its map or text amendment, so, uh, you must include a brief statement describing whether your action is consistent or inconsistent with an adoptive comprehensive plan. Um, honestly, this is my first case bringing to you where it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, however, you can approve an amendment, uh, rezoning that is not consistent or deemed inconsistent with the adopted plan. Um, just know that the approval of the zoning amendment also has the effect of changing the future land use map in our comprehensive plan, so that would occur simultaneously if this rezoning were approved. Um, also in this petition, you have to adopt a statement analyzing the reasonableness of the proposed rezoning. As well, and typically they're often done in one statement. So in summary, the property owner is requesting a general rezoning from industrial to suburban residential. Um, there is existing residential zoning to the west and south in the town of Gibsonville. Um, there's also some existing SR zoning further south in the town of Elon. There are also site constraints on this parcel due to both the size and the topography of the lot. Based on the information that was contained in your staff report, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning from industrial to suburban residential. At the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, planning board meeting, the board voted unanimously six to zero to recommend approval of the requested rezoning based on the approval motion which was included in your packet. Um, and I will put those suggested motions on the screen for you. Um, it includes both an approval motion, um, as well as a denial motion that you could choose whichever one. Um, also, as stated in your cover sheet, um, for our new peak software, if you were able to see it, um, I did add that this item would normally be voted on at your second meeting of the month, which you are not having this month due to the holidays. Um, so if staff feels, or excuse me, if council feels comfortable this evening, I would like to request that you consider voting on the items of this evening. If you prefer to wait, um, your next meeting, um, when you could vote would be January the tenth. Um, the property owner is present along with his attorney, if you have any questions for him, um, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Lori?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned the railroad right of way, how, what needs to be done with that?
Um, no, oops. Make it comeback. Can you make it big again? Learning the new clicker. Um, so nothing would be done with it. They could not build in the railroad right of way.
That's what I was.
It's part of the parcel, and all the parcels in Elon, a lot of them are like that, where they extend out, you cannot build in that right of way.
And then would they, where the grading is, so I don't know what the angle of the grading is there, would they, there be any ability to flatten that and grade that out, or does it need to stay? Because it just seems like university is, I know I'm not an engineer, but it just seems like university is sitting on that, that level there.
Right. Um, so I would probably let the property owner answer that question. Um, we don't have anything that would. We did have a meeting, um, with the property owner several months ago, um, and because this was a unique situation, um, we invited Alamance County, I had the building inspector there, the fire marshal, um, environmental health to talk about how a septic system would work on the property. Um, so we've all had like a meeting of the minds to try to figure out, because this is a unique parcel. Um, but he might be able to better address if they intend on doing any grading or not, or his attorney.
I have a real quick question before he comes up. So, under the zoning that we're talking about, how many houses can be put up this property?
One.
So one single-family home?
Yes.
Could you put a duplex there?
Um, duplexes, I don't believe are allowed. Let's see. I think they're not in NR, but not. Single-family, um, no, um, duplexes are not allowed. I kind of highlighted some of the major uses, um, the meeting that.
Yeah, another question I had, if, if, if we did not approve that, and it remained as industrial, you still have the dilemma with the water and sewer. Regardless, right? Do we have any situations where, uh, parcel is in the township of Elon buys water from Gibsonville? Or that's my par sewer. That's example of there.
Yeah. And a, and a bunch of homes on Westbrook on the other side of University, get the utilities through Gibsonville.
So this does have utilities available to it if, if they're from another town, that's what you're saying.
It has water available to it from Gibsonville with the potential to extend sewer from Gibsonville, and I think the three-year timeframe, what I mean.
So the Gibsonville has no obligation to do either of that, do they?
Well, they have water, um, water is readily available that they could tap, but yes, the sewer, and again, the property owner might be able to better address the from Gibsonville. Um, but one thing I did want to point out is, along with the industrial, industrial has increased setbacks. Um, so it really makes the lot really that much smaller because of the increased setbacks and buffers for an industrial zone.
Go back to that top, um, top graphical view where it shows like green, and you've got a triangle there, is that triangle really the usable land when, when you pick in consideration the setbacks from the right of way?
I would think it's that tree line, really.
It's not only the top, that when you look down, you got a triangle.
Yeah.
The aerial view.
Oh, okay, let me go back. I think I had the aerial up front.
Yep.
Yes, there we go.
Okay, you're saying that triangle is really where they could build within, because there's that Cook Road, there's a right of way there, right?
Yes, there is a right of way.
There's a right of way there, and of course, the railroad.
Yes, it's a very tight and small triangle. That's why we also had a lot of people in the meeting.
You're saying that he has right, he would have right of way to University? You could actually put a driveway up?
University has limited access to DOT. I'm sure would require a driveway off of Cook.
Yeah, okay, I just, that's, is that?
Great change. I don't think they could make the driveway coming up University. Secondly, I know DOT is gonna look at this and say you have access to Cook Road, you're at, your driveway's coming in off of Cook, because that is a limited access highway.
Do we maintain Cook Road?
Good question.
I think so.
Don't know about right there.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly where the town line lies on that map.
You're really close, right?
Yeah. I could. So the red line on that map represents the property line? So from that property line, you would also have setbacks.
Yes.
Before anything could be built.
Yes.
So might be point six acres, but by the time you do the setbacks, you're, you're losing quite a bit of length, figuring on the triangle, like.
I thought point six was the, after the setbacks was what you.
No, point six is once you take out the railroad right of way, which they can't build in. So then you've got twenty-five feet coming off University and twenty-five feet coming off Cook, so you're really shrinking that.
So, so I, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, maybe the. Yes, is there a triangle-shaped house that you could build? Setbacks look like this kind of problem. Would you like to say a few things?
Sure, yeah, we'd be happy to speak to a lot of you. Appreciate y'all's. Careful. Thank you to Ms. Oakley. I know when we came.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are?
I'm Ryan Moffett, um, a lawyer at the Vernon Law Firm in Burlington. I represent, uh, Brian Wagner, the applicant. Um, I don't know if you all remember, this was before you on the major subdivision decision two years ago, um, when Sonico was selling the property, and, you know, of course, when University Drive came in and sort of made mince meat of their parcel, there were a couple of other remnants uh, south of the Sonico parcel that also sort of were hanging around and, um, Mr. Wagner and, and Sonico came to a point where it, they felt like it was gonna be good for Sonico because it was a liability for them, really, and it, it made it difficult for them to sell their property, and Mr. Wagner saw an acre of land, um, you know, of course, point six-six acres after you, uh, account for the railroad right of way, but, um, you know, point six-six acres is still almost twenty-four thousand square feet of dirt. Um, that's a pretty big residential lot, um, even with setbacks included. And so, um, he thought, uh, he would take a chance on it, and of, of course, we went through the subdivision process, it was barely enough at an acre to qualify for that and, and become its own parcel. Um, and, and as you know, these, these statutes are drafted so that we're not creating parcels that are too small to do anything with. Um, so the subdivision statutes have standards, um, that are intended to ensure that the parcels you, you know, are resulting with are usable. And we have our, our zoning ordinances that, that exist to make sure that we have our property and that we make good, beneficial, purposeful use of our land. Um, and we have comprehensive plans to make sure that those uses are harmonious with, um, the uses that are around them. And so, notwithstanding that this is, uh, uh, this parcel has, uh, the history that it has and is a little bit of a quandary. I know it was, uh, a quandary for, for Ms. Oakley to walk into as the, uh, one of the first requests she's had to field in her role here at the town. Um, uh, Mr. Wagner's has been particularly resourceful and, and has pursued, uh, this opportunity, uh, as, as Ms. Oakley said, through all of the necessary departments. It's reviewed from engineering to make sure that, uh, a building is feasible on the property. It's reviewed by environmental health to make sure that there is space for a septic field and that it can accommodate a single-family house. I think the septic permit that would be issued would only allow for three bedrooms. Um, so planning and land use by itself aside, it has been reviewed for feasibility for a productive use as a single-family residential parcel. Strictly from a land use standpoint, which is what we're, what we're here for tonight, um, it's absolutely, you know, we've got reasonable and the public interest, and of course, uh, the comprehensive land use plan. And, and the reasonableness and, and the public interest is the opportunity to make good use of this land. As is, is very clear, just looking at it, it's, it is littered with limitations on what you can actually do. So what can you actually do? You can put a single-family residence on it. Um, you're certainly not going to make an industrial use of it. You're certainly not gonna make a business use of it just because of the fact that it's, it's surrounded by residential uses through the west, it's got massive topography to the east. University Drive is, you know, practically an expressway that divides it from what used to be its industrial use. So it's not an industrial property. It's just a default, is what it is. Um, I don't think this is particularly controversial. I do think you all have asked very legitimate questions about how feasible is any use here? And I think where there is a feasible use, we've got to find it and allow it to be, to, 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 um, materialize. Um, and so it's, it's, it's certainly consistent with those Cook Road, um, residential uses. Uh, and notwithstanding your comprehensive plan, we know why it's inconsistent, and that's just because of the old default assignment uh, of the industrial use from Sonico's days. Um, so I'll, I'll stop there, uh, and, and welcome any questions. I know Mr. Wagner would be happy to answer questions you have of him as well. Appreciate your consideration.
Are we looking at the right of way then, the exit and the entrance being on Cook Road?
Absolutely.
Probably, obviously, because you couldn't do it from University. Is there any thought given yet? I don't know how far you are in the process as far as how construction will happen during that time period, how, um, those types of equipment we get in and out of that area without there being any.
I think it's gonna have to be Cook Road, but there again, you know, we're talking about, we're not talking about a, a major development, we're talking about one house, so.
Concern, and we still haven't answered that question, who, who's responsible for?
DOT.
Town of Gibsonville?
DOT, State Road thirteen eleven.
Because it's in our ETJ, it's not in Elon.
Okay, so it's not our room.
My concern was, this is gonna be a private driveway until Gibsonville does something with that other parcel. I hate to think that we as a town have to create a private driveway and maintain it to get to there for one parcel.
No, there's already a road there.
Right, what I'm saying is, who's gonna, who maintains that road? And she answered that, DOT. Because Gibsonville, I think, that property was, came up, this is outside the conversation, but, um, that property was up for rezoning last year, so, and they voted it down. I think they wanted to do multi-housing.
Since it is so close to the railroad track, is there certain building, uh, requirements? Or is it, is it a normal house and, and the shake when the, when they come by, or?
I think, hold on, stop, hold on a second. In our notes, it says, "We can hold no conditions be placed upon the approval and no site plans can be approved with the request." So like, the plan itself, we are not reviewing tonight. We are saying, do we feel that this is appropriate for a single-family home? Nothing else. It is other people's role to make all these other decisions about the road, about any of that. We are only saying the zoning, because we, we have a tendency to get in the weeds of things that aren't our responsibility. So I want to reel it back in and keep it to the zoning. Because we don't have any say-so right now as to a plan or any of that.
Uh, Mayor, do we have any leeway as far as safety concerns, like?
That's not, that's not on us. There's laws in place that regulate, like, the railroad and then our zones as the safety, you know, items in terms of the setbacks that. It, it, this is a property that we approved to become a lot separate from the Sonoco property two years ago. I feel like it was longer than that. So this is just the next step in that process, is the rezoning.
And if you will, that is suitable for industrial development under our code.
So it's.
So, really what you're, is it suitable for residential development? So all the, all the issues that would apply in one are gonna apply in the other, and they're neither here nor there right now.
And the discussion that we had two years ago, because when this came, I was like, we already did this, but then I was like, oh, no, we didn't zone it. We just changed, we allowed for it to be purchased separately, was that that's definitely not ever going to have an industrial use, but because it was one property that got cut by a, essentially a freeway, you know, slow freeway right there, you know, that the real only use for that is going to be a single-family home.
Well, in my mind, the due diligence has been done, um, it's pretty, in my eyes, pretty cut and dry, and I'll see.
I just raised the concern about sound and vibration because of the closeness to the, to the railroad tracks.
But there's, there's distant towns already along there, so that's kind of like a.
There are.
Those homes to the left in Gibsonville.
Look at how close the homes are right out here.
So it's a non-issue.
Okay.
They're outside the railroad right of way for that.
Helpful. I, I agree with, uh, the green. You know, it's, it's a, it could be used for industrial, it could be used for residential. It's it's a it could be used for industrial, it could be used for residential, but I don't see anybody clamoring to to use that for a small industrial on six tenths of an acre. Just doesn't make sense because of setbacks.
There's plenty of other readily industrial space outside of this.
The user are gonna come in and want that for an industrial purpose.
And I can assure you, all those people who live right there are gonna be here to argue against that. If I know I would. If I lived right there. Any other questions?
So is our question, do we?
Well, we need to open up a public hearing. So let's open up the public hearing, right? That's what we need much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all.
Am I am I right?
So then I'd like to retroactively submit my staff report and everything once the public hearings open.
That should. Oh, okay. We're retroactively opening up the public hearing. Okay, sorry. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this agenda item? Anyone online? I guess what I really did was open the public comment portion of the public hearing because I did announce the public hearing.
Okay. And there is no one online.
All right, no one online. And so on page five of the staff report in our agenda is the options, should we choose to make a motion this evening so that there is an approval as well as a denial motion? So if anyone would like to make a motion, you will need to read the motion for the consistency statement as well.
Can I get my motion on the screen? We can easily.
I got it. I'll make a motion that the proposed zoning has specific site constraints, and while it does not adhere to the twenty forty envisioned Elon comprehensive plan is compatible with the surrounding land usage at an acceptable level of impact on both the immediate area and the community as a whole. Furthermore, the action is reasonable in the public interest because it allows the zoning district, proposed zoning districts are compatible with the area. The future land use map contained within the twenty forty envisioned Elon comprehensive plan shall identify this site as low density residential. There is already low density residential area identified to the south of the site.
Thank you. Do I have I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Is that an approval? Did you start the the top sentence?
The town of Elon Council recommends their approval of rezoning request.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for voting with people.
Thank you all. Thanks for voting.
Thank you. I'm quick question. We you all are aware, am I the only one that can't see the cover pages? Was that in our emails?
I have a difficult time seeing some of this because I think it's slow.
It says cover page included, but there's no cover page here. I think it's our view is the issue, right?
What are you using to look at it?
Peak Agenda.
Okay, that that would be the issue, yes. You use the email I sent you that had the packet with all the attachments and all the sheets that go with it.
Okay.
Kind of like novice, I tried to summarize it on that cover sheet.
Okay, yeah, because I was like looking for that because I always use that to guide the process and I was like, I don't see that cover sheet. Okay.
So just a question, I'll try, but with this, I'm looking at the granite. Right. I guess that's peak.
Peak Agenda, yep.
I mean, continue to use that, right? Or I mean, I'm confused about that.
And just real brief history, the way Novus works is there's two pieces to it. Something called Novus Agenda, which is what staff uses to create the agenda packet. You folks have been using what's called Novus Board, which you use to look at the packet. Peak Agenda is similar. Peak Agenda is the software that we use to create the packet. We've given you access to it, which is part of the confusion. The I legislate software is what we need to get you lined up with so that you can then open up the packet to view it and see all the attachments.
So confused about that because I've got the you can see that, like I can see the attachments.
Yeah, there's just not the cover page.
Yeah, well, a lot of stuff I can't see on peak, so.
Right.
So basically, we'll just need to download.
And so, right, so what we're finding out is like we have a couple older iPads that we need to replace that are more that aren't that can function the way they're designed to or intended to.
Also, let me share that this Peak Agenda, we were doing a pilot trial. So there are some things that you're not going to fully be able to do until we contact them back and say, yes, we're gonna go full speed ahead with this software. And then it'll open up the broader part of this. This is just a pilot piece of the software to try out.
Moving on to new business, we have letter A, multimodal transportation plan committee appointments.
So Mayor, members of the board, I hope you received this because I I put it on that cover sheet, the list of individuals. But I'll quickly repeat them. So I did hear from the DOT and the consultant, and we're hoping to start this plan in January, so it suggested we go ahead and get the steering committee appointed. So we received applications from Alex Nordheimer, Adam Zaskowski, Rick Robo, all these names, Malin Pastrana and Jim Hartman, who is a Gibsonville resident. Those are the applications received by the general public at the planning board meeting. I asked for two. I had three enthusiastic planning board members want to be on the committee. So I said, I will bring them forward. Diane Gill, John Harmon and Philip Owens, downtown advisory committee member, Mackenzie Brown was selected. Elon University staff, I emailed them and corresponded with President Book. And we have Tom Flood and Dave Gammon from the university. And then from the council, I know Monty has expressed the interest of being appointed. So those are the appointments that I request. The committee would also have staff liaisons. The planning staff, the downtown development director, the assistant public works director, and then yesterday Recreation Park also asked for staff liaisons. We would have one of them as well. So we're all covered. So it's actually came out with the ideal number. I was seeking ten to twelve, and I believe we had twelve. So yay.
Looks great.
And we need to vote to appoint them?
Yes, please.
Is this the of the public applicants? Is all that applied or were you able to filter through when you chose these?
No, this was all that I was applied, but I was very happy with the representation. Alex is a student at Elon University, so we wanted student representation. Adam, if y'all remember from the Park Northwest, he's very vocal. I think he'll be great on the committee from Cable Square. Both Rick and Jim are avid cyclists, so we can get the bicycling perspective. And then Malin is both a walker and a cyclist, so I was very happy with the mix of applicants.
Great. And they all have cars as well.
Malin has young kids too, so I think this would be to have that perspective as well.
That seems like a good mix of.
It really does. I'm excited.
And I'll say it's new names as well.
Yes.
I I like the names. I guess I'll just bring it up since we just recently had some more committees come up. I just want to make sure when we're getting these applications, we're not just saying yes to everybody and we're looking through them and you know, I mean, I think these are great applicants for.
Yeah, I looked through them and I mean, I couldn't have selected a better applicant pool diverse with the cycling, the walkers, the mom, the student. It's a great pool.
If you got a application of somebody like, yeah, we probably shouldn't have one of them. Not suggest that person.
No, I would still present it because ultimately it's the council's decision. You know, I could give you some background based on their application or you can read it, but we were very fortunate. The number that came in happened to work for us this time. But yeah, often you get, not very often, but you do get a above number of applications and sometimes you have to go through and pick which one. And staff would be more than happy to make suggestions if the board is so inclined to get that, but.
Having a non-resident is fine, right?
Yeah, so I asked Rich, I also looked back at our Haggard Avenue quarter plan because when that one initially came in, I was like Gibsonville right down the street. And I know he's in Elon all the time, but I know on the Haggard Avenue Steering Committee, we had folks from Burlington and Gibsonville. And so we went out of our jurisdiction for that one. So there's not a policy that says they have to be Elon residents. And he was also a very passionate cyclist. And so I'm like, he's probably in Elon on his bicycle, so I'm.
Thank you. No, no, I'm just I'm just glad to know that.
Because this is not a statutory committee. Your committee, you could put on whoever you want.
Well, the same is true for like sustainability and and the other ones that we have.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I have a motion to approve the appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Stay up here. Letter B, consider planning board appointments or reappointments.
So Diane, in your case, I believe we have two openings for two regular seats, and then we have that one ETJ seat that we just can't seem to fill. So if anyone knows someone living in the ETJ that's been open since I've been here almost six months now.
Is that?
It's the alternate position.
Alternative ETJ.
But I had recommended somebody to apply for that, so I'll follow up on that.
Awesome. So you have three applications that were included in your packet. And so Diane has listed their names. Ayesha and Mark are both current planning board members. And then Ed Peters is the third application. And we're looking for two appointments.
So with Mr. Peters.
Yep.
You know, I know an officer couldn't run for like town council across a conflict of interest. Is there anything of that nature being a staff member here working? Committee?
I'm not aware of any. Did you?
Great, Lori, I had talked about that very situation with Aunt Desada. And I let her know that he was interested. And she said, there's nowhere that says he can't apply. But at that time, when she was here, there there weren't any openings.
So there's the restrictions on on membership to committees typically go are focused at elected officials. Couldn't sit on the board of adjustment or the planning board as an elected official. But for employees, a place that rules employees can't be elected officials. I was, it's not the case. But I think in this case, there's no restriction to.
I mean, I guess you think about it, the downtown may.
Or is that?
That's the staff liaison.
It was a staff person.
Yeah.
So we put, I mean, vote in it, and she just.
I think one of the things that I would really like to see, especially with the planning board, is where do they all live to make sure that different areas of town are represented? Just because if everybody lives south of University Drive and is currently on the planning board, then we should really be focusing on getting more people from the northern part of the town where a lot of the growth is going to occur. I think that that's really important, you know? You know, like if I lived across the street from Quinn and then Mark lived two houses down from Quinn, then it makes the most sense to have the three of us on the planning board where we're only going to really be thinking about our little area as a priority. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. And I can give you a list of the current members and where they live. I do know that Ayesha represents the Ballpark community. She's the only one on the board representing that community. She lives on Ballpark Avenue. And Mark Padell lives on Arbor Drive.
And actually was.
The other folks live on Orange Drive. We have Miss Williamson Avenue, Ridge Dale, Olson, Stone Gables, and Huntingdon Street.
I think in a perfect world, that would be great. And we've seen to get a volunteer is is a precious, precious gem. Just like we're elected, we could all be in same neighborhood. We elected, so we don't have quadrants where we have representatives, so as much as you'd like to, I think we try to. I don't know that you can really limit it.
Well, I think that if you have more applicants than you have places, that's something that should be considered.
How often do we have more applicants? This is fun. A few times that.
Right.
When we had two positions are coming for reelection. And a third person's asked to be participating in that process.
And we already have our alternate filled?
Yes, he's been very active, our in-town alternate, wow. And I will say that since I've been here in June, Ayesha and Mark both attended planning board and have been very good active participants in the meetings that we've had. We've had, they've met as both planning board and board of adjustment. And they're meeting again next week as board of adjustment on Christmas week. And both of them that said they would be in attendance. So they have been really good members. I haven't had issues with either of them so far as attendance or participation.
It says a lot.
Position opening next year on the planning board?
Yes, we the planning board staggered. So next year, we will have Jim Beasley, Clark Bennett, and our alternate Ralph Harwood.
As Mr. Peter, has he applied before?
This time.
Are you asking us to pick our two?
Yes.
How do we go about suggesting that? Like, do each one of us say the two we want?
I think that someone would make a motion to approve this point, these two appointments and second, and we vote, and if if it doesn't pass, then have another motion.
We approve two of the three. Motion that we approve Ayesha Lee. And Mark.
I have a motion to approve Mark Padilla and Ayesha Lee. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Will you please just let Ed to know that you have more than you can do? Great.
Question we can ask, as far as attendance, how are are most of the planning boards members attending? That should always be a criteria. If there's someone, shouldn't just reelect someone. And as I say, like you said, they they Ayesha and Mark both participate and contribute. And being there is half the battle. So, you know, if there's ever a situation where someone's not regularly attending and contributing, then we would need to know that and we would hope for recognition.
That would be nice to have in our packet next time this goes around.
Definitely. And and I have had to do that unfortunately in my previous jurisdiction where I had a board of adjustment member who just would not attend the meetings. And after so many I went to the county commissioners and recommended that she be removed from the board. We are also working on new bylaws for both our planning board and board of adjustments, so there's probably going to be some attendance criteria in there as well. So if they don't meet that threshold, then that would definitely come before you and I be.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, there's no. Just to confirm, there's no old business on our agenda, correct? Alright, so moving on to discussion. Did we switch the order of those or?
We had talked about that, just thinking in terms of the. Capital issues as we're getting ready to start budget process might have a higher priority than the rules and procedures.
Any thoughts on that? Everybody, are we switching those two?
So at our retreat last month. The board came up with a list of. Capital investment recommendations and I guess priorities as opposed to recommendations. Focusing primarily on the one to three year or focus on the one to three year initially. Replace our ladder truck in twenty twenty-five. I mean, that to be about one point eight million dollars. Dividing and permitting, getting the plans ready for police station. I, I put together, I put an estimate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that, get to that construction process. That's not. I, I won't stand by that number. Just for, for just budgetary reasons, I put a number there. I don't think it would be a whole lot less than that. I'm not sure it would be a whole lot more than that, but I just wanted, wanted to have something in there that we can work on. We have talked about public transit expansion, board seems supportive of that. We've been working with. Transit over the, since prior to the rate. And I think we were carrying a figure of upwards of sixty thousand dollars, you know, what we come back with. An annual cost to expand their root system to include Elon.
In that number though, doesn't include us pouring concrete to have like a.
It doesn't.
That's sixty a year or sixty over three years?
Sixty a year. And, and again.
It seems higher than what we heard.
Well, and, and it was. We've given them some different proposals of route lines. Remember they. How long they spend at Elon. I think that's high, but again, it's. I want to have a number in there that we, we would be guaranteed to meet. We talked about upgrades or developing a plan to replace our public works facility. We didn't have, we don't have a price on that at this point. Talked about skate park, the estimate was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Continued sidewalk projects, we didn't specify which one. So the cost will be determined based on what kind of side, which sidewalks we're looking at. Northways and streetscape. We've, again, these are, I'm gonna say preliminary estimates, but they're back of the envelope at best. We estimated about two million. Depending on, you know, how long it takes us to do it, what, how we, how we approach it. We had an item to acquire additional parkland or. Focus on land we already own out on eighty-seven. Again, cost to be determined if we're acquiring land, as to where it is, how much it is, how, how many acres that claim. Likewise, extending the greenway was tied to grant funding. We'd have to figure out where we're going with it. Had an idea of the cost on that. Four to six year. An investment of five million dollars to build a new station. Fire station expansion and, and design work. Haven't, haven't tracked down a, an estimate on what that might cost in five years. Again, that's a ways down the road, but we want to keep that in mind. Sidewalk projects continued. The town hall design for renovation. Two items, town hall design and, and funding for all the, all the planning and permitting. Again, I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there as I did with. Police station. If we are talking about renovations, this building, supposed to a new building. I, I got about seventy-five thousand to do all the design work and permitting. If we're looking at doing significant renovations to this building. We have public works on there for part one, after we get past the planning aspect of it. And looking at. Whatever we decide to do about additional parkland. Starting that, that design process. Longer range, seven to ten years. Addition to the, to fire station. If we decide to rebuild, build a new town hall, rebuild town hall, remodel town hall. We had an estimate from architects two years ago, three years ago. To renovate this entire building to about one point eight.
What does that mean, renovate this building?
It's a square footage cause, I don't know what that means.
I think that was more than three years ago, though.
Well, I think they updated.
Free me being on this board. That's like more than five, so.
I met with them two years ago. And they kind of updated some of the numbers, so. Again, I, you know, when you talk about this building. There's nothing on the, on the police side that would prevent us from occupying that tomorrow, other than the police officers. And they win that fight. If we build a new station, there would be nothing to stop us from moving over there. So I, I'm not tied to this renovation concept for town hall. There may be some modifications we need to make. We need a bigger meeting room. Maybe we need our conference room. So those are some things that we would keep in mind as, as if that hap, if moving that direction. And then longer range past that and also depending on different funding opportunities, we had. Community building, renovating our existing one expansion or recreation center. Adding a roof to the Slate Park, basketball court Slate Park. Streetscape improvements on Haggard, the phase one estimates under the Haggard plan were about ten million. And that's going to rely an awful lot on federal and state funds to, to get that done. Extending the sidewalk on South Williamson, down to Church Street. A, a major investment that would rely largely on state and federal funding to do that. Expansion of the parking facilities at Slate Park and a downtown green space concept. So those are, those are the things we came up with. Following that, we met with Mitch Ruglio. Of Davenport, who walked us through investment, you know, how, how we can invest in capital. And as you recall, he gave us a wide range of options from. The option of basing it entirely on share of our total assessed value. Basing it on a percentage of our expenditure budget, both of which. Could lead to. You know, short-term complications exceeding a reasonable policy. We haven't established yet, but he gave us some policy ideas as well. Doing either those maximum borrowing scenarios would put us. On a, you know, twenty-year schedule might put us over the thresholds we want to achieve, you know, for one or two years. He also gave us a, an existing funding, so taking existing budgetary money and applying that, what we could do. And then gave us some scenarios of, of, you know, a one cent tax increase for capital investment, a three cent, a five cent. So. Really where we are now and, you know, the, the conversation tonight might be. You looking for. Information from us, you know, as we move forward. And I don't think this is a one-shot deal to talk about it, but the upcoming step is, alright. How do we take our. Capital investment capacities that Mitch laid out for us and apply them to the multitude of projects that we've identified. You know, I dare say for that six-year timeframe. We're probably exceeding what he suggested was a reasonable or. You know, a reasonable borrowing. A pattern. And if you call, he, he talked about, you know, in twenty-five, a, a two million dollar borrowing package for a new ladder truck. And starting perhaps a capital borrowing project for some of, and for some of these projects with additional borrowing. Like every three years for the, over the next six years. That would get us to agree a total of how much we're going to borrow and what, what we can afford to pay back either. Existing budget format, or if we were to. Look at a taxi, a small tax increase to pay for that. So it really is a follow-up discussion that, that we need to have. On what? What do you think is reasonable? What's reasonable from the, our investment standpoint as far as, alright, what's reasonable and which projects we're going to move forward on? Or what's reasonable in going to the voters for, say, we need, you know. These are the things that we think this community needs and seeking their endorsement through a bond referendum.
Well, one of the things when you look at this, and I mean, it's kind of hard to comprehend all this in, in one. You know, like the other night with him. Getting, looking at a grant writer, I think is very important. And I realize that may sound like, well, you know, that's not answering our question about how we're gonna. But, but, but that's important to me to at least know kind of what's, what's out there. Not that we're going to make every decision based upon ifs. Because I realize it's not something you can go to a grant writer and go, oh yeah, well, that's no problem. I mean. Well, at least to kind of figure out more than, than our area of expertise here. The other thing is purely from a financial person's perspective. You know, obviously we want to stay within a reasonable budget. You know, there's, there's different ways to look at this. I think, you know, we've kind of mapped out some priorities from a standpoint of. There are certain things that maybe we can take out of the general fund. For, for certain items that are low-hanging fruit, so to speak. But then there's other things, you know, police station, fire truck, you know, things that, you know, there's going to have to be some borrowing involved with. I mean, I think, and I'm, I'm talking very high level here, so I'm not answering any questions, but. I think you kind of have to determine what is a reasonable amount of money we can borrow. Keep us still in a sound state and, and, you know. Take the things that we have seen as priorities. I mean, pretty clearly the police station is one of them, obviously the fire truck. That can be debated as far as different things, but that was kind of the reasoning for our, our free. And then kind of work around those, those things. Again, it's kind of hard to get your head around all this at one time from a budgeting standpoint, but I think you've got to. At least look there and then you can go to the, what are we going to do for tax? Are we going to have a recent? Tax like we have in five cent, what are, you know, what are we going to do? But, you know, realistic. Borrowing power that's, we feel comfortable with, that's not going to take us to the limit. No different than when I'm applying or analyzing people coming in borrowing money. They may qualify for it. But is it something that's going to be comfortable for them if there's a problem in, in, you know, in the economy, whatever? I think we've got to look at that on a macro level from, from municipality in the same. Level. So I think we've got to be comfortable with borrowing. But we also have to be mindful of what's, what's reach a happy meeting with that. Do I know what that is right now? No, I mean, I think it would take some, some, some deep diving there, but. You know, with something this comprehensive, you kind of have to start, it's kind of like writing a term paper. Getting started is the hard part. You kind of have to get. Thing, but the grant writer to me is important. I mean, just. At least get that started and I know we said we can contract that out.
I don't think we can really talk about a tax increase until we know what the valuation is going to show.
Well, and that's the other thing. When we had a retreat. And I was under the impression that the new values were going to be in place for twenty twenty-four. They're actually going to be in place for twenty twenty-three. So mid-January, county is supposed to be completing its process and announcing new value. Which is going to have a drastic impact on values throughout the county. And, you know, it, it, it will. We, we will, we will have to do a kind of a dual process budgeting wise to look at, tell people what it'd be if we. Excuse me, no new taxes or no new revenue through taxes. Versus if we, you know, if we feel we need to raise taxes to, to do that. You know, in either case, our mill rate will be going down as everybody else's will be, but. Do you have any, any additional questions that you want feedback from Mitch on?
One thing, I, I thought that was really enlightening. I, I thought it was really helpful to have him here and talk about all the different options. And what might work. The, excuse me, the one thing that I. Had some concerns about was just timeline, you know, because when he talked about whether we were having a bond referendum, that's something that would. Need to be done, you know, start being worked on, it seemed very quickly. Versus whether we're going to borrow the money in a different format. So that's, that's the only questions that I had is. You know, like we, Mark just said, it's not anything that, that we can digest in one meeting like this, but at the same time, it'd be nice to know. What sort of timeline do we need to make these decisions by?
And, and my recollection was, you know, if. If, if the board is looking at a referendum in November of twenty-three. Or whatever portion of this you're looking at initially. Very doable timeframe, some of it is, is how long you want to. You know, once you, once you make the decision, we're going to referendum in November. How much community dialogue time you want to have? That, that, and that's a, I mean, there's no magic to that to say, oh, it has to be this much or, you know. It's however much you feel comfortable with. You know, some places might finish up in May for a November meeting. Some might be lunar July. There are certain things that need to be in place. Before we go to the LGC.
Right.
For all the approvals. And, and so that might take time on some of these. You know, the, the initial part of the police station. You know, all the permitting and engineering and architectural work, we might do that on budget. And not worry about. Having a bond question for a police station for three more years until we're ready to build it. By then we'll have all the plans and all the permits and, you know, so, so that's, you know, that's kind of where we are. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to rush to bond it. I mean, we would need some of that before the LGC would approve it. But to authorize the bonding. Three years ahead of time, you could do it because of bond authorization lasts, but. You question, is, is that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the stuff we could have ready for November, some of the stuff we may not be able to have ready for November. Fire truck is one of those borrowing, it's not typically have to go, doesn't necessarily have to go to the voters because it's a, it's a vehicle. typically have to go, doesn't necessarily have to go to the voters because it's a, it's a vehicle. We still would need to get state authorization on that through the bid specs and all that. But if we're going to take possession of a ladder truck in twenty twenty-five, we need to know that because we need to do all that groundwork this coming budget year to put it out to bid. So that, because it takes that long to build these things.
Oh, I know. I'm trying to get a car right now and it's taking me four months to build it, so.
And those are mass-produced, you know?
Thank you.
I feel like at the retreat in February, we're probably going to be at a better place to start thinking about how we afford things because we will have the evaluation dollars, like, we'll know what that is. Because I think there's too many things like up in the air right now. And then that also gives us some time to research some of those larger grant opportunities to see what might be available to help fund some of these things.
Talking about internally on our own or what we had spoken about before contracting out some more?
Um, well, I think writing a grant, I think that some, I think that we need to look at contracting someone to do the actual grant itself. I think that the staff could probably, or our, our help or whatever, somebody already on board can probably at least look to see what is out there and available.
Do they have time to do that? I mean, I just know there's a lot.
I think I agree with Mark, right, that, uh, everybody goes, our top two is ladder truck and police station design and funding. We've got to have that ladder truck. It's two years out. I don't know if it's locking that in now where we say, hey, we want it, so we keep that price tag. And then the police station, right? We, we went ahead and bought some land for it because this was the movement. So, I mean, we should not drag our feet and do it. And then, you know, public transit, what we have estimated, I am a little, you know, I think it's like thirty dollars a month. Kind of were proposed. But, you know, we have sixty thousand dollars. Is it going to put a giant dent? I hurt anybody. I think we all agree on that. This is something we want, but if we do it, you know, I, I would like it done correctly. Where we have nice stops. However, that is, is done. The thing as far as the bonds issue goes, you know, I think that's something that could be done. You have, for that skate park, get put into that, but the sidewalks. I don't know how we do the sidewalks, but I, I think I would like some more understanding of where these sidewalks would go. And instead of us just deciding where it goes, I don't know if they're, everybody wants a sidewalk from their neighborhood to, to go here. And so, you know, putting that out on a bond, I think a lot of people would be like, yes, sidewalks, we want this, we want the walkability. But then what if it's not coming to my neighborhood? I'm going to not, not vote for this. So I think we need to be strategic in how we place these, these sidewalks. I don't know how we do a study. I don't, I don't know if it's a survey asked about it. I know we have a ten-year sidewalk plan that we put together. That, you know, public looks at that, they're going to be like, it's down here. But I, you know, I feel more comfortable doing something with our parks and recreation and sidewalks with a bond. That there's no question, we're going to be borrowing money for a police station and a ladder truck. Now, I think just based off Davenport's movement, if we don't, you know, no taxes raised at our current mill rate, what, what we have. We are good to have debts on our current budget. Starting in twenty-five and twenty-eight, moving forward with that, with like one point one million dollars or something each, each year. So, I mean, I think we could get some of these things done with that, staying in our current budget movement without taking on a giant debt capacity.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Spence saying. I guess my concern is, I don't think we have enough information to even think about putting something to a bond referendum. I mean, there's so much information. We're just throwing out numbers. And we all know you're not going to come up with a proposal or police department, assuming that's something we would present as a bond referendum. Sidewalks, like, like you said, we talked about a million dollars or four million dollars. So we have a lot of unknowns. I think the ladder truck is something that is a priority because we already know it's two years out, even if we, even we said yes the day. So that's something we had to prioritize, how we're going to do that, how we're going to spec it. And this plan for that, like you said, in twenty twenty-five. But other than the North Williamson streetscape, which there again, it's, it's a guesstimate of two million dollars.
And then designed yet.
Right. And so to design something, I think that's where we got to look at the general funds. You have some pencil paper and we got to pay for that. We talked about property up to eighty-seven, a master plan. That's another long term thing. We haven't talked about, you know, that's something we look at. But there's a lot of things that we have no information about what it's going to cost. As your point, Mayor, do we see the valuation? You know, if we go revenue neutral, what does that mean? Or do we use that? Not lower than the tax rate, use that. We already know pretty much a penny means sixty thousand a year. So it doesn't cover a lot of anything. What I gathered the other evening when we had Mitch present for us and maybe someone, please correct me. I certainly got the gist from him that obviously the bond referendum is something we can use, but the, your, your borrowing capability would be your number one way to go. And I think we've all kind of said it, hey, not, not against the bond, but you got to have your ducks in a row. You got to have, you got to have exactly what you want. You got to have it a palatable to go out to vote. With the lending part of that, you can, you can plug in some numbers and, and see what's realistic. And I'm not trying to sound like we're out to try to borrow the world. That's not the case at all, but I think it appeared what he was telling, if I'm reading between the lines correctly, that your best, quickest point of action is going to be to, to borrow the money, get some, you know, and then determine with the taxes. And I agree, we don't want to be looking at that right now, which you know, next year would be something to look for there, but that's kind of the gist I got, was the bond referendum would be on down the road a little bit.
And I, I agree with you. That's what I was hearing too. I mean, although he did mention that the majority of municipalities that he worked for the bond did pass. I still got the, the feeling that, you know, if it didn't pass, then we didn't have really any options. And so, you know, that we really needed to work with the lending aspect of it because unless we had all our ducks in a row and we knew that that was going to pass, we really would be hurting to figure out how to pay for this stuff.
So I guess what I'm hearing is that, and again, this, this gets to budget proposals that we'll be vetting in February, is match a plan for the eighty-seven property. Going out to bid on ladder truck with a delivery date probably in twenty twenty-five. Design, architecturals, permitting, site plan work on a police station. And sidewalk priority list.
Grant writer.
But, yes. I'm thinking in terms of what we need to make sure we put money in the budget over the, this next year for so that the following year, we're ready to, you know, if we have our top three sidewalks, is that a time we want to borrow money or how are we going to do it? And you're right, he did say, you know, with a, a structure, you don't necessarily have to do a, a traditional bond. You can do more like a mortgage. And use that structure as collateral. As opposed to just good faces, you know, general obligation bond, which gets into how things get approved and how they get done.
If I was to suggest like sidewalks, right offhand, or the fat frog connecting to, I would like to look at, see how much that costs. I mean, we do it.
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that, that, that's, you know, that's something that can present to us. And then continuing from Sunset to Green, I think that can do a lot of old forest. Georgetown, I've been through this way of folks.
I'm not sure what the distance is on that.
Sure, but it's something like, like that, right? Figure out our highest population distances to have traffic coming into our downtown, because I think ultimately what we're trying to do, right, by doing this downtown plaza, having bus stops downtown, this North Williamson streetscape. Wanting people to come from out here.
And accommodate where people are already walking without facilities. You know, if so. Haggard Williamson. Yes, you know, they walk up and down. You know, Branchwood or Forest View or Green Street or Wagoner, you know, they, they, they walk on those streets now, not necessarily a, a safety issue as opposed to walking on South Williamson. Or walking along the edge on Haggard. There are some areas where it is definitely a safety issue for existing users. That, that may not help stimulate pedestrian traffic into downtown. But would address an, an existing safe, you know, safety issue.
I think it's going to need, I mean, while I certainly want access to downtown too, I think it's, we, we're going to have to look in depth at how the transit system and making sure that those folks that need transportation for jobs are going to grocery stores, they have, you know, a safe way to get to those particular transit stops, you know, and so, while I definitely am supporting downtown, I think we it's going to take, it's going to take some time to figure out, okay, what's the best use of that, that access?
If, if we're saying that gee, a good place for stops, a bus stop is on Manning or East Gate. Great place for a bus stop, but nobody can get to them.
Right.
So that may change priority of which sidewalk, you know, where, where the sidewalks fall.
It's all positive.
You know, one not, we never really talk about is the fact that Ashley Woods is kind of in its own little island and there's no connection from there to anywhere else in town. Like, how do you get, like, if you're going to ride your bicycle from Ashley Woods to downtown? There's no safe path.
You have to cut through. I have friends that have done it, but they cut through a lot of different angles to get there. I personally have.
But, you know, if, if you want the people who live in our town to come into town for like a tree lighting, menorah lighting, you have to make it easy for them to get to it. And it's a whole lot easier to get to Burlington and Gibsonville than to downtown Elon for them. And then, you know, we have neighborhoods coming on board to the north. How do we provide that connection to them? And, you know, it's not safe necessarily at all times to cross University Drive. And are there maybe grant funds that we haven't thought about to maybe do under or over so that there's a safe connection? You know, a lot of other towns have more of those pathways that are going under the roads or over the roads that cost a lot of money. But it's also, you know, connecting our people. And not leaving Ashley Woods over in its own little island and people who live in the northern neighborhoods. So not concentrating all of our focus just in the middle of town, but remembering that we have those other areas and how can we safely get them connected with other?
You raise a good point. I don't know if that's something we should put on our with part of the class coming, right? We know it's coming. They're, they're talking about sidewalks coming and the OT doing a traffic study, I guess, with speed coming through there and doing a crosswalk. Is that something we need to, let's own this plan, money aside to helping figure out how we're going to, is that going to be on us as a town? It's going to be on the state to help facilitate crossing the street?
No, it'll be on the developer. Developers doing the traffic study. Developer would be building, adjusting those signals, adding in those pieces for crossing.
Then we can do that, not, not help the developer, but we feel like we need more safety. And then walking a, a bridge over, across, is that on the town of Elon to do that? If that's.
Quite honestly, that would be, it might be on the town of Elon to push the legislature to come up with that kind of money. Because I don't see the town of Elon ever being able to.
You're talking like three million dollars to go under or over, so it's.
Wasn't it about three times that one railroad track?
Do you remember?
I heard it was a million dollars. I thought it was a million dollars.
Yeah.
I thought it was a lot more than that. Okay.
And, yeah, to go under or over, I mean, I, I think that I read that it was three million dollars on a recent project in North Carolina. Yeah.
And, and some of that depends on, on, obviously on grades, on the, the railroad number line, all of that. You know, at that intersection, as I, you know, when, as you said, when, when that project is built, they'll be redoing the lights. They'll be putting in the crosswalks, they'll be building that first section of the sidewalk from University down North Williamson to the I think it was to the driveway into the parking area, I don't remember the name of that street. Beginning from there down to driveway to Road Stadium, there's still a gap. And that would likely be something that we would look at doing. Would you then complete that connection from university all the way, all the way into town, single sidewalk? Going out beyond that? I don't know. It's, you know, there's a, those are a cost, but there's also cost benefit. And you know, there's something to be said for people who, who choose to live out of town, choose not to have sidewalks. Can't have, you know, you don't run sidewalks out through the country for, you know, it's just too expensive.
I don't think that we should be running it all the way out to the park in eighty-seven, but if we're going to have neighborhoods right there that are so close, they should be connected.
And, and at, you know, at Park Northwest, and they ultimately they will be. How much further beyond that do you go?
I don't think you go any further than that. Developers would handle that, but but there's no, you have to have a safe connection is what I'm saying and like.
Yeah, we have a place for.
Ashley Woods is a huge area of our population. And if they're all by themselves, there's no way to connect unless they're in a vehicle. But I think that those are things that we have to consider.
And your grandchildren will thank you for it when they're looking at infrastructure in Elon and thirty, forty years that we are now with Ashley Woods, the same, why didn't you have sidewalks put in when you had the opportunity? And, and lots of other neighborhoods. Okay, so that, that at least gives, you know, helps to clarify where we, where we're going for the next, say, four months. And what, what we will need to do with staff, come back to you at budget time and say, these are the priorities that we've come away with and here's what we're going to do to, the funding we're going to need to take those next steps. And, you know, beyond that, this, this is a decision for another year. It's a good story. All right.
Okay, so moving on, do we want to get into the policies and procedures or do we we want to like commit to like thirty minutes and then move on? What are you, are you all feeling? I don't feel like it has to be like the absolute top priority. I think we have time. Like, we're going to get in the other room.
I don't think it needs to happen tonight, but I do have some items on there I do want to discuss at some point, so never.
So you want to just commit to discussing for the next thirty minutes and see where we are then?
How do you anticipate the close session?
Three minutes? Or do you wanna just hold off?
I mean, we, we.
I would.
Put it down.
And I mean, each of you can also read through it and send me notes. And then I can come back with edits.
That would be.
It's not, yeah, it's not something that we have to like sit and go line by line and over.
When we were at the retreat, it was easy, cause we were in a, in an informal. I like, I like your idea, go ahead and go with.
Okay, so can we commit to doing that, everybody having me edits at least five days in advance of our next meeting? Can we commit to that and then I will make those edits and have it in the packet?
That's January tenth, right?
Yeah, or do we, well, I guess it'd be at the second meeting, right?
That, that would be the, essentially the workshop session.
Okay, so let's, let's plan to focus on the workshop, so if by January fifteenth, if everyone can have their edits to me. And then I'll make those.
I think that's a better use of time.
Okay, I do too, okay. Alrighty, so moving on, we will go to reports, so starting with our town manager.
Right. Quickly, holiday closures coming up, important last meeting, but. Offices will be closing a bit early on the twenty second. For employee luncheon. We will be closed on the twenty third, twenty sixth and twenty seventh. Uh, it's, it's the, of our policy indicates for the holiday, Christmas holiday. We will also be closed on January second for New Year's. Five P M on December eighteenth at the West College Plaza, we will be, uh, having a ceremony, uh, lighting the menorah uh, uh, for the first night of Hanukkah. I, I wanna see. I was, I was out of town, uh, but I did get some text messages and some videos. Uh, and we had an awesome turnout for both the hometown Christmas and Christmas in the park. Jill estimated several hundred people at there at one point or another. Um, amazing what bringing kids to, to, having kids perform will do the attendance with all their parents and grandparents. I wanna say thank you to Phyllis and, and her crew, as well as Jill and the folks from the downtown committee who helped set up downtown. Both great events, uh, well represented by the, by the residents and I think people had a lot of fun. I also like to, to reach out and, uh, as I wrote down here, the intrepid guys at Public Works, um, who, they, they showed up, they set up, they cleaned up. And downtown, they even drove the, the tractor with the hayride, so, um.
Was really cool.
You know, it's, oh, do your rides at Christmas, you do those at Thanksgiving, Neilon. So they had a, I, I wish I could have been there, but, uh, I had a good time at my family's weddings. And, uh, this is a, is an interesting issue, uh, that, that Monty's a, a bit aware of. Sunday afternoon, driving home from doing a bit of Christmas shopping, I saw the neatest, most realistic stuffed sheep in somebody's front yard. Just sitting there, eyes looked good, everything. I get a text from Monty the next morning, I just drove by, there's a sheep in this front yard.
A real sheep.
There's a sheep.
I saw him Sunday, Monday.
Monday at lunch and, um.
Another way of, uh, blowing the grass.
Yeah, I, and yesterday after, when I came home, came back to work after lunch, I got behind our, our grapple truck and got up to that part of the street and congestion, there were some people out on the street, there was cars parked on both sides and there's a police officer there. Oh, what happened? And turns out that that sheep has been on the loose for a while now. We're not sure if it, if it came from the nativity scenes, if this is a, a repeat get loose sheep customer. Uh, or if it's just been on the loose, but we've, we've been having sheep sightings, I guess, for quite a while here. And, uh, finally wrangled it, I guess, and got somebody who knew what to do with it.
What was amazing was, he wasn't chained up and he stood there in that front yard.
Yeah, for two days he was there.
Yeah, and shepherded combined.
That's right, yes. What kind?
He was kinda sheepish.
Yes. Just waiting for someone to lead him, waiting for someone to lead him around like he just lost sheep. Uh, sorry, that's what I've got for report.
Right, Stephanie?
You know, on my report, leaf truck, can we just put it out there? Yeah, leaf truck, I, I've gotten lots and lots of emails today from folks that have a lot of leaves.
The, now, real quick, the, the, the leave truck is down. If you recall, we had put in this year's budget to buy a new leaf truck. And the vendor who got the bid gave us a date certain for delivery. The vendor who did not get the bid could not give us a date certain for delivery. So we went with the date certain, that date certain has now changed multiple times, it's now next December. The vendor who did not get the bid, who could not give us a date certain, has one sitting in Kearnsville that we have written a disorder on. And we should have it within the next couple of weeks. And we canceled the other purchase order as well. So it, two vendors and they flip flopped on their position and hopefully we will have it in-house on the road for the next couple of weeks.
Wonderful, wonderful news, should we still encourage the neighbors or the, excuse me, the entire town of Elon to?
If they're putting leaves out of the street right now and expect anything to happen to them, need to be in bags. If they're putting them out loose, unfortunately, they're gonna sit till we have something we can suck them up with.
Every other city.
And, um, that's right. And, uh, we are trying to increase our, our social media output and everything on our website. Uh, we're trying to make sure it goes out on social media to alert people. And I would say for any of you who have social media presence, when you see it, push it out to your folks. If you're involved in any groups, let them know as well. And we're gonna send a notice to the, the, our sunshine list, which is both press as well as people who have asked to be notified of what's going on. So we try and get some wide distribution of that. Well, it'll only be another couple of weeks if you have to bag it. Uh, my neighbors are, wow, it's already out there, stay in there, blows around, it blows around. We'll, we'll get them eventually.
Oh, sorry, I don't, thank you to everybody for all the Christmas and holiday, um, extravaganza. Congratulations, if you don't mind me saying, to Diane. Um, and, uh, just thanks for all the hard work, I mean, everything was beautiful, it was wonderful. So thank you.
Yeah, I wanna echo the, Christmas was awesome, um, last year I thought it was fantastic. And then this year, the, the staff, uh, sprinkled their holiday magic everywhere. The, uh, hayride was a joy to be a part of, uh, me and Emily happened to get on my family and Emily's family, uh, were part of the, the, the last ride that went around. And it was a mixed use, it was, uh, neighbors and college students. And some of these college students were just speaking of, oh, this was one of their best memories of Elon. And so I think, yeah, that says a lot, uh, you know, we, we, we love our locals, uh, we love our year round residents. But having that, that college, uh, student say this is something they're gonna remember forever, just says a lot about our town. Um, I'll say you go anywhere in the country to college and they, they decided to go here. I also wanna thank all the staff for coming out there, um, Chief Massey saw you with your family and, and your kids. And, uh, you know, I saw all, just about all the department heads and, uh, it was just nice to see us all come together and it was, uh, very, very well accepted by, by everybody. And having Miss Kim's dance group out there was a genius idea. I mean, it, it packed our downtown restaurants, it was just, it was fantastic. You know, that's how we get some people downtown. Um, I also had the opportunity to join in on the Impact Alamance, uh, dinner, um, with the elected officials on Thursday. Um, and that was really nice, um, I think we had some great discussions, um, to the point of where, you know, being, being invited afterwards to continue the talk, um, uh, at, at Beer Works, uh, with some of the members. So I think that was, uh, nice, I think we, as elected officials, have a, a duty to speak to other elected officials. It was the first time in my elected official capacity, um, that I felt like I could speak to other electors, uh, and county commissioners, school board members and our senators and house representatives. So it was just nice to build those relationships and, and move forward with that. I look forward to seeing everybody at the menorah lighting on the eighteenth, I think that's gonna be something fun, I'm glad we're, we're doing that. And if I don't see y'all, you know, happy holidays and Merry Christmas and I appreciate you.
I'll just come down the line, Mark, we're going way out of order tonight.
That's all right. Yeah, I mean, I echo what they've said about the Christmas celebrations, uh, this year, I've, you know, I've been doing Christmas at the park and then, of course, the last couple of years downtown. And this, this year was by far the best, I thought, and again, genius to get the, the dancers there. I mean, I was just, and I highly encourage that going forward, um, it really was good. And what that does is it gives people a taste of our downtown for them to come back. And that's kind of what we want, so we installed a stamp for that, had a really good time. That's all for me.
Yeah, it's exactly what everyone else has said, but most important, I like to thank those volunteers. And made it all happen because, you know, out of Bethune Park, there were so many young people out there. And I'm not sure what organizations they were associated with, but Phyllis did a tremendous job of recruiting people. And I'd, I'd like to see us as a town, as a board, to acknowledge that, either with a letter or somehow just thank them for their participation. Because, um, this, this space, young people got a lot of things they could do. So to have them out there was important to see what, uh, what difference they make, um. Mayor and I had an opportunity also to meet at the breakfast with the Alamance County officials. And I thought that was a great, we even got to hear from our state legislators, um, what's happening there, what's, where our tax money's being spent. Uh, Alamance Community College is a, is a gym in our backyard and, uh, encourage people to, uh, if you haven't been out there, go out there and look at it, because it's, uh, they're growing and they're providing a valuable resource. Or, or for us young and old people to learn and to grow, so, uh, thankful for that. And, uh, as, as Quinn said, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays, whatever holiday you, you celebrate. Uh, spend time with family and friends and, and, uh, never take, uh, ever brain. Last year, of course, was a very nice, uh, year for, uh, the turnout for the tree. So when Jill asked us to help with the crafts, Pastor Sharon, uh, the associate at Elon, set up the, 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 uh, station, when I came out, she was feeling like she was overrun. And, uh, but she did a great job and, uh, and we both, uh, worked very hard. But we had lots and lots of kids and they made lots and lots of, uh, Christmas decorations. And, uh, a lot of them really appreciated the time, so we were very pleased, but we were just taking pictures, it was just impressive, so. Um, just glad that we could be a part, and I think Jill did a, did an excellent job. And, uh, I think I did share with you and, and, uh, we don't know the weather's just not being agreeable, but the green space is going to be worked on where that yard is, where the breakfast place is gonna be. We were hoping it was gonna be started by now, but we've had some very serious rain events that would keep us from doing that. So you might start seeing that work done sometime soon. And, uh, there is a great hope that, uh, that as the plaza gets ready to be built, that we'll have a nice kind of coming together. And that will be a green space, that will be a healthy green space. And, and already the additions that are making it nice, the, uh, the planter and it's still looking great. That's, uh, the art project is, is a wonderful thing, so. So that's, that was my two cents in addition to everybody else. And I am finally glad someone said, congratulations to Diane, how exciting, that was, that was, uh, when we saw that on Facebook. Cool, so, so thank you for, for sharing that and sharing and helping us share your joy. And, uh, looking forward to a, 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 a healthy and hopeful holiday season and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you all, um, enjoyed all of the events. Um, then of course went to Disney and brought home COVID, so, you know, happiest place on earth. It was wonderful, so I wouldn't change it. Um, so that has certainly changed some of my plans, I was unable to go to the event at Impact Alamance. Um, but I was able to attend the breakfast before feeling, falling ill last week, um, which was really nice. Um, you know, that's always one of my favorite events, plus the food is great. So, um, next year, it's definitely worth the drive out there because food is awesome. And it's just, it's just a good event. I'm really looking forward to the menorah lighting, so, um, I'm excited about that. And, um, just excited for the holiday season and the opportunity that the staff will have to have a little bit of time off. So I hope everyone enjoys that, I hate that I'm gonna miss the luncheon. Um, but I'm gonna take a little trip with my mom. So I won't be here for the luncheon next week, but I'll be sure to send something. I gotta look at the sign up list to see what needs to be brought still. Heard there was a shortage, so. Um, okay, well, that is all for me, um, we do have one other item on our agenda. And, um, that is for us to go into a closed session to evaluate the performance of the town manager pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, point eleven A six. That all, I have to say, do I have a motion to go into closed session? Did Jeff have something? Did you have anything, Jeff?
Say something, Joe.
Yep.
I was just mon- just listening to my neighbor.
Okay, um, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we even have to? Um, all in favor, say aye. All right, so, since this is our only meeting space, uh, we will be asking everyone to exit the room, um, during our.